All right. Mayor and Commissioners, welcome. This is our 2024 City of Dayton Resident Survey Results Presentation, or otherwise known as Feeding Cory Frolic Six Months of Story.
It's not wrong.
Notice he won't miss it, right? There's some really good news in here. There's some continuation of news as we've done our work. And so I am turning it over to Ms. Abby Jones, and she will turn it to her team.
We can show we're going to be always active and important. This is all the things you need to do.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. In the past, Jeanette has been the point person for her Dayton survey. This year, we have onboarded a new staff member, Jennifer Custer. And so she's taking the lead this time and presenting the information to you. So I'm going to hand it over to Jennifer.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and get started then with the 2024 Dayton Survey Results. We'll start off by just picking out our agenda real quick with some of the point items that we're going to carry through. The survey purpose: Dayton has been surveying residents for over 30 years, and the survey went through a significant overhaul in 2016 with the introduction of a new vendor to align with the survey with more nationally-approved survey practices. The purpose of the survey, though, is to objectively evaluate resident satisfaction with city services, gather input on the city's priorities, and conduct historical data for analyzing changes over time. The survey data is a very valuable tool, and we see this as a reflection of the general public sentiment rather than a response to specific interactions on a particular topic. For the third consecutive year, we partnered with the Institute to conduct the Dayton survey. They were established in 1982, and they are dedicated to helping local governments collect statistically valid data from residents to improve community planning and support data-driven decision-making. They specialize in designing and administering market research for cities, counties, nonprofits, transportation departments, and grants and authorities. The survey consists of three phases: design and development, administration and data collection, followed by the data cleaning, analysis, and reporting. Every survey cycle management budget works with ETC and departments to review and refine questions specific to their programming services as needed. Special attention is paid ensuring that all major city services are included in the survey while ensuring that the survey questions don't grow by a significant amount. For 2024, the Dayton survey, we opted to keep the design changes to a minimum with the expansion of only one question, and we'll talk about that in just a moment. In the coming weeks, ETC Institute's annual findings report will be released, and that'll showcase this year's survey results. Today, we will preview the dashboard, which includes some of the same information along with historical data to support a longitudinal analysis. If we look at the survey by the numbers, to ensure that we have statistically significant results, ETC Institute distributes surveys to 10% of Dayton's population, approximately 130,000 residents. To what they're aiming for is a 10% response rate. Again, to maintain that statistical significance. Sorry, that's going to be trouble. 13,000 surveys were sent out to randomly selected addresses beginning in September of 2024. The survey was closed when that 10% response rate was achieved in November of 2024 with a total of 1,312 respondents, including a male or web version of the survey. This sampling strategies provides a plus or minus 2.7% margin of error and a 95% level of confidence. This is important because it means that if you were to repeat this process many times over, 95% of the resulting confidence interval would contain a true population value. The red points on the map, as you see here, represent addresses provided by respondents to ETC. This is important because it ensures that all the land use councils are represented in proportion to their given population size. While some of the areas may appear underrepresented based on this geographic footprint and all of that yellow open space, all land use councils have been adequately represented given their population density. As I said, the goal for the survey is to leave it as intact as possible, and that's again because we want to maintain those trends of data. This year, the expansion of this question. In previous years, we had asked, thinking back over the last several years, is the appearance of your neighborhood getting better, getting worse, or about the same? In 2023, 20.8% of residents indicated that the appearance of their neighborhood was getting better. And we are delighted to find that 30.7% of residents reported that overall appearance is marked as improving, marked by a 10% increase. Now, based on previous survey results, and to gain more information, we modified this question to see if we can gauge what in the neighborhood was making it better, worse, or about the same. While we don't have this trend yet because it was a newly introduced question, 37% of residents stated that the condition of third of their streets and roads are improving, and that 27.4% mentioned that the condition of residential streets and roads are getting better. While this is good news, this is something that we'll continue to monitor to keep in mind's eye for future trends. We're looking at just a few trend highlights. We'll pause for questions, too, if there's any, just a moment. So we'll have that opportunity for sure. Before we dive into the dashboard, I want to take that opportunity to just highlight a few results and points of interest. We will take a look at more detailed information on the dashboard, but there are some trends that warrants mentioning. As mentioned earlier, a significant overhaul in the Dayton survey occurred in 2016 to better align with national surveying practices. Since 2017, we have tracked different metrics and trends to show long-term patterns and see if efforts of the city were moving that needle of satisfaction. In 2017, satisfaction with Dayton as a place to live was 49.8%. And by 2024, satisfaction has increased 60%, rising over 10 percentage points. On its own, this is a noteworthy improvement. However, when paired with a nearly 10% point, that same inverse in a drop in dissatisfaction, it strongly suggests that residents are recognizing and appreciating these efforts and initiatives. We'll take a deeper look in this when we get to the dashboard, but it's definitely a highlight worth mentioning. Resident satisfaction with water and wastewater services also showed signs of improvement compared to 2018, when this question was introduced, with an increase of 8.4 percentage points overall. There was a slight dip in 2019, and we could trace this back due to a loss of... There's a slight dip in 2019 due to a loss of confidence after a water main break and the 2019 tornadoes. Both of those, we can trace back. Both of those also were effects that caused a boil advisory for residents, and so that's where we can really even put that dissatisfaction draw. Since that time, Dayton Water Team has built in operational redundancies and has been certified for testing PFAS, making Dayton the first municipal laboratory in Ohio to achieve this certification. All of those achievements have increased resident satisfaction with the safety and purity of Dayton Water. As the Dayton Water Department continues to invest in operations and innovation, we continue to look forward to seeing this positive trend increase over time.
May I?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I have other questions. Thank you. Thank you very much. Can you tell me, I want to make sure I'm following. The satisfaction with Dayton as a place to live, what is that? Perhaps I'm ahead, but I just would like to know, like, what is that based off of? Like, drilling down that number from that, that's 49%, 49.8% to the 60%, excuse me.
Does it probably say going into later on?
Yeah, we'll drill into that later on the dashboard, and we'll definitely hit that, though, because it's really nice to see how the strength... Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, absolutely. Our last little trend here to take a peek at, though, is our satisfaction of sidewalk streets and pavement. When asked how satisfied are you with the overall quality of convenient streets and pavement, Dayton resident satisfaction has increased to 22.6% in 2024. We will certainly get into that more also in the dashboard, for sure. Over the seven-year trend, we have seen dissatisfaction increases and satisfaction decreases. Let me do this now, sorry. Satisfaction decreases, which is not ideal. But this year, we saw fewer people are expressing dissatisfaction, which is a great move in the right direction. While people, in other words, the overall sentiment has become more positive as they're starting to see those investments that we're making in cities and structure. It is important that when discussing survey results, though, just because we show that 52.1% are very dissatisfied or satisfied, it doesn't necessarily mean that the other 47.9% are satisfied, though, too. It's something that we keep in mind's eye when we're continuing to look at all of the data, though, too. In fact, even with this question, under a third of the respondents had a neutral response or they don't know, meaning they either didn't have an opinion or they're okay with the status where things are at currently. Now, because we have a limited time together, we're not going to cover every question that we have on here. But these questions, these perceptions of city, yours, it's in your packet, it has the pluses and the minuses, or the increases and where we're at, and information on there for you. A link in the dashboard also is provided in this presentation. It will be on Management and Budgets page. And then the report will be distributed when we receive it from ETC in the coming weeks. Before we start into the dashboard, are there any questions about this? Or if not, we can head straight to the dashboard.
Questions?
I do. I do have a question. Ms. Lockwood's looking at me. She already has a question here with Lisa, as well as with Cheryl Jones. So I know we have the range from 2017 to 2024. From my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm very happy to see that that number, again, to your point, right? It's decreasing, and people are seeing the investments that are being made. So my question is, correct me if I'm wrong, but like, a lot of the investment has really started to take place within the last year or two with the focus on curves and sidewalks, especially ID Dayton Recovery Dollars. So I guess I just want to know, like, how is that matching with that number to make that comparison to say that people are, in fact, seeing that range?
We can look at that in the dashboard. As soon as we go to the dashboard, you'll be able to see that trend line, and we can look at the numbers for the last few years.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
Okay, so getting started with Dayton as a place to live. Excuse me. When asked how satisfied are you with the city as a place to live, 60% of respondents, residents responded that they are satisfied or very satisfied with Dayton as a place to live. 60% is a great level of satisfaction despite being down ever so slightly from our high in 2023. The shift from satisfied really settled in this neutral category, though. So that's something that we always want to look at, too, when we're looking at the data. And it suggests that respondents might not feel strongly about the issue one way or the other, or that they just responded with they don't know or that they have a neutral opinion, things are okay. As mentioned earlier, in 2024, we also recorded our lowest level of dissatisfaction with only 14.5% expressing dissatisfaction. And this is the lowest since 2017, which is also good to see. The Dayton Recovery Plan has made a concerted effort in the north and west areas, which may be part of the reason that the highest change in satisfaction has come from our west land use council. From east land use council did have a slight increase in satisfaction.
To answer your question, Commissioner Turner's lost. If we go back to the trend line, you'll be able to see those trend lines diverging, starting with 2021.
And that, to the point made earlier, that's when you start seeing the investments with DRP, right?
Yeah, we started, we started...
In 21, when you see that trend line.
The Dayton Recovery Plan wasn't approved until the end of 2021.
Right, and that's when that trend line...
It was approved in December 2021. The improvements didn't start until September of 2022.
That's there.
Yeah, I just want to say sometimes it's hard to provide direct correlation with the survey just because it's public sentiment. So we can't say for sure 100% it's DRP. Shelley's point, it was approved at the end of 2021. The surveys were already out in the field, like...
Yeah, I'm just using DRP.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Considering that, I know that that was the focus of those...
Yes.
But I also think you've got to take into account that you did have...
Other investment.
Issue nine. Yeah, issue nine improvements had started, you know, in 2017. So you were probably seeing a lot of that investment as well, and that was trickled all throughout the city. So those neighborhoods are seeing the impact of year after year after year of increased investment on asphalt resurfacing, pothole repair, and all of that, too.
Thank you.
So moving on to the value of services and programs. Satisfaction with the overall value residents receive for Dayton taxes and fees is 38.6%, which has remained relatively flat since 2022. It should be noted that, again, the neutral responses continue to occupy a third of the responses, which is not necessarily a bad thing, again. Considering that this is, considering this three-year trend, it may be necessary to reassess how we communicate services and programs, to identify potential strategies for increasing engagement or shifting people out of that kind of neutral section, though. Our downtown residents remain the most satisfied at 44.3%. And the most positive change, though, was at 3.6%, where we saw an increase in satisfaction from our land use council in the west. Bear with me, it is about to load. Here we go. Also to note, then, our Hispanic residents, residents between the ages of 18 to 34 were our most satisfied respondents, while our black residents and residents with a tenure of 30 or more years were our least satisfied residents for this survey cycle.
Dayton, one more time, can you start with the Hispanic community? I want to make sure.
Yeah, our Hispanic community, they were our most satisfied group of, as far as race goes. And our residents between the ages of 18 to 34, they were also our most satisfied group, while our black residents and our residents with the tenure, how long they've lived in Dayton, are under our 30 years or over, they were our least satisfied group. Again, and you'll see, I mean, it's not, when we talk about that plus or minus 2.7% margin of error, too, I mean, most of this, some of these things might not necessarily be, like, significant. Like, it's something that we absolutely have to look into, but it just might be worth noting, especially when the trend continues to be the same over year over year.
I'm not sure it's a mistake that things started to turn where residents had been here less than 20 years, because that's when we really started to focus on clean and safe, right? And it just takes time for things to say. And I think one possible explanation is that folks who'd been here longer might remember the bad old days and still colors their views, which I understand.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to Dayton, the direction that Dayton is going. When asked if you feel that things in the city of Dayton are generally headed in the right direction, 43.9% of residents agreed that we are going in the right direction. This is up slightly from 2023, so this is really great to see. Additionally, what's even better to see, I think, is that the percentage of residents who believe that the city is headed in the wrong direction, that dropped. So that's even better than, and that dropped to 21%, which is now our lowest in the seven-year trend information that we have. So that's really good to see. While most areas agree that Dayton is heading in the right direction as far as our land use councils, our northeast land use council realized our O-lane reduction, and it was 0.8%. And again, when we're talking about that margin of error, we're talking about insignificant changes. But just to note that that was our only decline in satisfaction. Our young adults, 18 to 34, and those who have been living in Dayton for 10 to 19 years, have reported our most positive changes. So they're seeing that we are definitely headed in the right direction. And our minority residents and those over the age of 65 have reported the lowest positive percentage responses. So important city issues. This question is a little bit, I'll explain just a little bit of it. I'm sure you guys are experienced in seeing it very well. But this question was added in 2022, and it's based on prior written responses from residents and based upon their concerns. Basically, what's put together is this grid of information. And it's a two-part question that residents have the opportunity to respond to. The first part is, if the listed issue is important to the city, please, you know, rank it in that capacity. And then the second part of that question is, how well is it currently being addressed? Excellent, good, fair, or poor? So in 2022 and in 2023, the top important issues indicated by residents included crime safety, abandoned homes, and violence, drug use, and street conditions. This year, you'll see ours pretty much remained unchanged, and even the percentages are pretty small. But this year, for the first time in at least these three years, we did some gun violence that increased, and that increased by 1.8%. Like I said, barely pushing over streets and sidewalks. And that joined our top four list now. And that's just above street conditions, which did see a 2.7% decrease. So that means we're doing the better in that, obviously, in our streets and sidewalks conditions. But the residents still remain concerned and increased that validity in with the gun violence. Okay. I'm going to try to go through these a little bit quicker, sorry. Feel free to stop and jump in if you have questions, but we'll try to get to these very quickly now. For recreation and youth programs, the number of residents reporting satisfaction with youth programming saw a nearly 3% increase compared to 2023. And the good news of this one, though, too, is that negative responses also declined to 2.9%. So we're seeing that in that split where we're seeing satisfaction rise and dissatisfaction decrease. Although satisfaction is 3% higher than total satisfaction, again, it looks pretty low. But this is, again, the note of relevancy that the don't-know responses continue to make up this largest group. This is likely our residents that either don't use the service or aren't informed of that service. To this question, so a little over half of respondents even answered the question. So that might be what it is. Our west Dayton residents saw a 10% increase in satisfaction, though, so they're definitely seeing some usage ever in our west residents, then. When asked if residents would be supportive if an immigrant household moved next door, 57.5% of respondents agreed that they would be supported. And this is a modest increase over 2023, and it's back in line with our pre-COVID results. So it's nice to see that we're kind of having some trend information and something like that, so we can see if there are any patterns and stuff coming out of pre-COVID and post-survival. Okay. So acceptance has had some minor drops in the north and north central land use areas. But acceptance of end-of-appearance also declined by 10 percentage points by residents living in Dayton for less than 10 years. That flip kind of also, though, did increase by 10 percentage points by those residents who had lived here for 20 to 29 years. We're talking about the resident satisfaction with the city support for entrepreneurs and small business owners dipped slightly over last year, but only slightly, again, to begin that plus or minus 2.1% margin of error. Also, half of the residents who participated in the survey, again, chose that neutral response. Again, this could be an indication that a significant portion of the respondents, either didn't know or didn't have a strong opinion about the services provided. Overall, no satisfaction did decrease just ever so slightly. And the satisfaction was highest for our black residents and was for Hispanic residents, and especially for those thinking $10,000 or less annually. When asked how satisfied you are with your neighborhood overall, resident satisfaction is up 3 percentage points from last year, rising to about 57%. And that's, this puts us just within sight of our 2022 high of 58%. So we're definitely going in that right direction there, too. Dissatisfaction also dropped to 19.1%, which is the lowest rate, again, that we've seen since 2017. So always good to see that.
Say that one again.
Yeah, so dissatisfaction dropped to our lowest rate since 2017 at 19.1%. Where, again, we're continuing to split that margin where we're increasing satisfaction, decreasing dissatisfaction. Just over 69% satisfaction is reported by our downtown residents, while all of our land use councils did have positive increase. The west did report an 8.8% increase, while the north, this is our lowest, and that had a 0.8% increase. So we're seeing some movement of that needle of satisfaction, and again, especially in our west, with our west neighbors. Housing affordability. So residents' overall satisfaction with affordability of housing options in Dayton continued a slight decline of 31.8%, while neutral responses from 2023 skewed towards more inside of dissatisfaction for 2024, resulting in a 31.9% dissatisfaction rate, as follows US trends. But it's something we still definitely want to keep an eye on. Higher satisfactions, higher levels of satisfaction were reported by our downtown residents, by our downtown residents, our minority residents, and our younger residents, while, I'm sorry, our Hispanic residents. Well, our black residents and those 50 to 64 and those living in Dayton for 30-plus years expressed lower satisfaction. Some of this information, too, when we looked at it, homeowners that responded were 29%, and renters were 24%. Their results were consistently about the same. So it was interesting to see how that breakdown happened as well. All right, when we talk about police services, more than half the respondents continue to express satisfaction with police services in 2024, though this year saw a slight decline in overall satisfaction. Again, we talked about that margin of error, to just over 55.1%, while lower than reported in 2023. This is in line, again, with national trends, and it is higher, though, than was national trend line satisfaction for police services, 53%. Even with the decline, dissatisfaction is under 16%, meaning that some of the previously satisfied respondents opted for a neutral response this year, meaning they're okay with the services that they were provided with. Overall satisfaction remains highest in our eastern neighborhoods. Year-over-year satisfaction declined most for our downtown residents, our southeast residents. White residents reported the highest satisfaction, and Hispanic residents, and those of the age of 18 to 34 were our lowest respondents. When asked how satisfied are you with the professionalism of police officers, satisfaction dropped 4 percentage points from 2023, and dissatisfaction also increased 3 percentage points. Despite a nominal increase in satisfaction on the west side, they continue to be the least satisfied land use council that we have. Our minority residents and those 18 to 34 years old also reported the lowest satisfaction with police professionalism. I think it's important to note that all survey responses, again, should be viewed as general sentiment from residents and not as reflective of individual interactions. The Dayton Police Department has begun conducting surveys in 2023 through my Axiom 90, following resident interactions to gather more accurate feedback with residents that they actually interacted with. Again, this is general police sentiment at the broad and general scale. responsiveness of Dayton, nearly 46% of residents agree that Dayton police are responsive to their neighborhood needs, with a continuing stability year over year. Residents aged 65 years or older, white residents, and those living in downtown Dayton reported the highest levels of satisfaction, while residents 35 to 40, white residents, and those living in the northeast expressed the lowest levels of satisfaction for police responsiveness. Yeah, they all, they're all really close, so it's... Throw a dart up there and get the same result, I think, so. We're talking about intelligence gathering technology. This is the second year of including this question on the Dayton survey, and a large majority of the respondents agree, again, that the use of gathering intelligence gathering technology for public safety is totally appropriate, with 77% of the residents finding the use of technology appropriate and 18% of those finding it inappropriate. Downtown residents, Hispanic residents, and our younger residents view intelligent gathering technology as less appropriate. Just under half of the residents that responded to this agreed, though, that it is more than, they agreed that it's the very appropriate category and not just the inappropriate category. So almost 50% of the respondents agree very appropriate. Just to mention real quickly, so neighborhood safety, there's a couple of components to that, and we'll just talk briefly about that. A key point to note is that the neighborhood safety during the day and in downtown Dayton continues to improve, while feelings of unsafety are declining. On the other hand, safety at night saw a slight decline of just over 4 percentage points. Sorry. Of 4 percentage points. All land use councils indicated a slight decrease in feelings of safety, especially though in the evenings, with our north central, with North Central reported the largest change in its feeling of safety with an 8.1% percentage point of decline. Skipping over to fire and EMS services, satisfaction remains high despite just, again, a minor drop from two thousand and twenty-three to twenty-two, or just seventy-two point seven percent. And even with that drop, fire and EMS services have consistently related with that seventy percent satisfaction mark, which is just outstanding. In two thousand and twenty-four, more residents responded with don't know or neutral than two thousand and twenty-three, despite that, despite even that drop out of the, into the neutral area, if you will, dissatisfaction remains very, very low, under two-point-five percent. Satisfaction still remains uniformly high throughout all of the land use councils. And the decline that we saw the greatest change in, though, was our downtown residents, and that was a decrease in satisfaction at five-point-nine percent. With recycling, they come in, satisfaction with recycling services reached a six-year high mark. Satisfaction continues to tick upward in trend, with a three-point-six percent increase, and dissatisfaction declines, which at, to its lowest point now, at seven-point-nine percent. As we could probably allude in your year-over-year growth in our land use councils, all of those had positive growth. Our best growth, though, was on our West side at seven-point-four percent. For waste collection, when asked about the overall quality of waste collection services, there was a slight rise in satisfaction to seventy-seven point nine percent, which is the new, the new high that we have now for satisfaction. Satisfaction also hit a record low at five-point-seven percent. Satisfaction, again, is consistently high throughout the city, but residents in downtown and northeast reported minimal negative changes. Again, when we think about that two-point-seven percent margin of error, we consider those as nominal changes, something to watch, but nothing to be, call for action. Quality and condition of housing, while residents reported similar levels of satisfaction with the quality and conditioning of housing in two thousand and twenty-four as they did in two thousand and twenty-three, neutral and uncertain responses made some small gains, and those expressing dissatisfaction declined ever so slightly. Satisfaction continues to be the lowest in the north and northwest, despite a low satisfaction change of nine-point-five percent in the West, which realized, and again, indicative of investments in that area. As we kind of alluded to, as far as with water previously, though, the confidence in the purity and cleanliness of Dayton's tap water rose four percentage points in two thousand and twenty-four. Additionally, the not confident responses dropped five percentage, five point three percentage points. Downtown Dayton residents and those that make up the ten to twenty-nine years of tenure group, those responses are the most confident, while minority residents are the least confident. Again, year-over-year increases throughout the entire city. This increased satisfaction could certainly be a direct result of the publicity and the grants to reduce P-FAS and city water and operational improvements as well. Resident satisfaction with street conditions improved significantly from two thousand and twenty-three, rising over five percentage points, while neutral responses increased. Dissatisfaction dropped by eight percentage points, largely due to the sharp decline in very dissatisfied responses. Again, satisfaction is highest for our northern central land use. Year-over-year, we had our highest growth in downtown, twelve-point-three percent. The northeast land use is the only decline in satisfaction that we had, which was, again, a very nominal, minimal change. When asked how satisfied residents are with the overall quality of parks, playgrounds, and splash pads in your neighborhood, satisfaction grew four-point-eight percent, almost forty-six percent over two thousand and twenty-three. Additionally, the dissatisfaction dropped, and again, we're beginning to split that trend. So we're at our new all-time one percent satisfaction at twelve percentage points. All areas had a year-over-year increase, with the most growth in satisfaction in our southeast and north central land use councils, and the least satisfaction of point-nine percent in northeast. Our Hispanic residents and residents eighteen to thirty-four maintain our highest levels of satisfaction. Again, they're all pretty much in line, though. We already hit every single one of them. As in years previous, nearly eight percent of residents reported experiencing discrimination or unfair treatment by the city, among them, black residents and those in the northwest and West Dayton, lower-income individuals, and residents ages thirty to forty-nine percent reported higher instances of discrimination. Sixty percent of residents strongly disagree or disagree that they have experienced discrimination while accessing or using city services. This trend has obviously remained relatively flat. And if you want to flip back to your presentation, then we'll cover the satisfaction, the conclusion page, we'll cover the Okay. I'll take this one. This one, this question, you've probably seen this, like, kind of stoplight, people, probably have seen this before. So we introduced this kind of important satisfaction, kind of mathematical comparison when we partnered with ETC for our two thousand and twenty-two survey cycle. And so what this ranking is doing is it's taking residents' opinion on the importance of the city services listed. So it ranks them one to fifteen in terms of most important to least important, when you're forced to rank these services. And then we also compare that with their reported satisfaction level. So what's happening is, in terms of the red area at the top, you're seeing that's marked as high priority. These are services that residents have said these are most important at the top importance level, but then also satisfaction has been reported a little bit lower. Medium priority, these are kind of your middle of the road, not that they're not important, I'm gonna say that again when we get to the green section, but when you're forced to rank importance, these kind of are the middle-of-the-road category services for residents. They have middle-of-the-road satisfaction as well. We're doing what we need to do, maybe there's some dissatisfaction, but it's kind of meeting in the middle. Your green, these are services that people still find important, but when you make somebody rank them, they can kind of end up at the end. But you'll see with these, the satisfaction is high. These are high satisfaction services, things that residents are really satisfied with, not that we don't need to pay attention to these, but we're doing what we need to do. The thing I want to point to, all the way on the right side of the table, you'll see we have included the two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-two rankings. So if you look at that red section, except for the environmental question, which we added new in two thousand and twenty-three, you are seeing the exact same things that residents prioritize. This has not changed over the three years that we've done the survey. So this is just a really helpful way to kind of summarize. We ask a lot of things in the survey. For the residents to tell us, what are the things that they prioritize the most? And you can see it has not changed. They still find these areas, it's a top priority and things that they find important. So we'll continue to do this, and hopefully, I'm gonna guess for a little bit, this will kind of be the same story. You can see the middle section hasn't really changed either. We've seen some things kind of move around, but in terms of what residents value and what they put at the top, it has been the same. I think that's it. I can pause for questions here before we move on, but.
Hey, ready for the question? Could you tell us?
I'm gonna hold my question for now, Your Honor, because I honestly, I guess I'm struggling with the overall satisfaction rate of the neighborhoods, and then when you look at the priorities of the satisfaction percentages. I'm just trying to make sure I'm on the wrong way and I'm tracking, because I know the overall satisfaction rate is this, the macro level, if you will. But then, as we drill down and we look at these various priorities, I'm just trying to see the correlation of many things.
So one of the things I think you should keep in mind is that one question, overall satisfaction, is a question, a one perception question. It doesn't have any sub-questions underneath it that arrives to that summary number. So it is one number asked for, you know, that was generated from asking that one question, which is just a generic perception question. So these other questions are independently asked on various issues. So you could, you're not gonna have, you know, a set of numbers roll up into that one sixty percent. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Can you do me a favor? Can you go back to the drill down on the dashboard? Can you go to code enforcement?
Do you want to look at the map?
Yes. And then can you just go back up? Okay, thank you.
Good. Ladies and gentlemen?
No, I'm good. This has been interesting. Very stable, very steady, I think, and some improvement in some of the important places that we've been looking for, for years and years. So I'm happy. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the questions I had in terms of, we've always had these challenges, we talk about the police technology, we see that seventy-nine percent versus eighteen, eighteen percent, and people, the technology was appropriate, sorry, excuse me. Big moves in that space. Overall, your thoughts would be, if all of them that you made past year, A+, B+, C?
Well, I'll tell you, I'm new to the city, so I've only been here just less than a year. I had the opportunity to help with the Dayton survey, the two thousand and twenty-four Dayton survey, and after seeing these results compared to two thousand and twenty-three, and again, knowing what I know from watching commission meetings and seeing the investments that the city is making and taking for the city, I'm very encouraged by it. I, solid A, A+, for sure. But I'm really impressed and encouraged to just continue to see the investments that we're making now, to continue to cultivate these positive responses as we continue.
And I want to point out, sorry, the slide we showed that showed the result in two thousand and seventeen to now, that's what we really look for. Like, those year-to-year changes because of that margin of error, you're gonna see variation depending upon who responds. What you want to see is that long-term trend, and that's really impressive, and I think that speaks to a lot of the work being done.
And to piggyback on Jeanette's point here, for the last few years, we've been talking about, we've been making investments in our roads and streets, right? But we haven't seen the needle move. This year, we saw that needle move. So we are, we are seeing that people's satisfaction is slowly increasing, and our labor is bearing fruit.
Not that the words in here seem almost the same words in life. No, seriously, the aspect of the issue six, we passed last year, at seventy-one percent, if you had to do a whole, like, comparing the success satisfaction citizens of the past, you know, by sixty, or seventy, seventy-one percent, would you say that the promise reflected in this survey is closely related to the success we have had that year?
I will, I will hesitate, because it's hard to say direct correlation with some things. But I think what is interesting, when you look at the write-in responses year-over-year, we see certain things, like, I'm gonna say Wayne Avenue was very highly responded in comments previously, and because of some of the work, like, I guarantee we won't see that again in the comments, but I think, yes, but no. I think, yes, a lot of that work is a direct correlation, because you can see from two thousand and seventeen on that change that we've been seeing, but it's hard to say for sure this question was directly impacted by issue six investment. That's the only.
Well, Mary, to your point, because issue nine was eight years, issue six is gonna be eight years, right? Those are trend influencers, right? Because we're not doing one-and-done investments. We have committed and shown the community that we're doing annual investments to keep doing the work of raising quality of life in the community. And so I think there's a lot of correlation to, again, us being able to do those longer-term strategies of investment in the community.
And on the roads work, prior to issue nine, we had no resources to plan this part of fixing the roads. So the plan continues with issue six. Other questions?
No, thank you. Thank you very much. If you may, Mary, if I may, would you just remind everyone, please, just the process, knowing that there are the surveys, they just went out the end of the year, September, September, excuse me, if you could just enlighten everyone on that process, and we'll be forward.
Absolutely, yeah. So this year's survey cycle was kind of unfortunate. I do want to say that it was out during election season, too. So the traffic from that, we were kind of concerned if we weren't gonna get those responses. They hit homes in the very beginning of September, and we were able to fulfill our response rate of ten percent, so thirteen-hundred-twelve respondents by November, and able to close it then. So that was really a goal to hit, and we were excited to hit that finally. And that was mail responses or web responses, the two. So that was really nice. Yeah, sorry. So the administration and data part here on two, it was beginning of September through November, we received those responses, and then ETC does their work for it, your hands off of that, and then we get the report and some other data, then so we can start running, running stuff together, putting pieces together, and try to make sense of the trends and the patterns.
Jennifer, can you also repeat one more time where this link will be posted, so that our, you know, residents, our commissioners, our staff, anybody can go to where it's posted and go, and follow along with these surveys?
Absolutely. Great advice, manager. Thank you. The survey findings and trends are all on my dashboard, this repository of our data and trends and stuff. And they take this and they put this on this beautiful dashboard, of course, that they can, residents can drill into, anybody can drill into to take a look how the trends and patterns have changed. It shows all of the demographics that we looked at today, tenure, age, annual income, all of that. So it's all online at this website here, this dashboard's my sidewalk. And this will be published this evening. So it'll be live this evening and ready to run.
And it is on the City of Dayton's Management and Budget website page. And so you can go to that page, and you'll be able to directly link to that dashboard. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You should. Thank you, staff as well, for your work to help make this happen. Good enough, yes. Thank you.
We just talked about color coordination, right?
Very colorful.